Well, I'm an accounting professor, yeah. We have, we have fully audited financial statements, a whole nine yards.
Okay, so how do I look at a consolidated balance sheet?
Go online and go to the website.
There's a financial.
Is it there? I must have missed, I'm sorry, I'm new to this.
No, there's a, there's a financial page and then up on the upper right-hand side is all the audited ones.
It does contain a consolidated balance sheet.
Oh, the audited ones there, yeah.
Excuse me ma'am, but it's not a hundred percent correct. So, we don't do, so we don't publish, even though we request it several times. It's not a monthly updated sheet. You can go back to last year's and see where we're at. But if you were looking for like in normal town, you go to Go On Me, here's where you have financials, here's your balance, here's the whole thing put together. That whole thing put together forms your budget. That we do not have.
Yeah, she asked about the balance sheet. It's a balance sheet.
It's a balance sheet.
She asked about the balance.
So, you look at that on a monthly basis and know where you're at.
No, you don't. You don't look at the balance sheet. You don't look at the balance sheet on a monthly statement. That's ridiculous.
You're doing a budget.
No, you don't. Alright, so, do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that the council approve.
I've got a major motion here. Okay.
The proposed fiscal year budget 2017, 2018.
You've got twenty-three thousand in payroll.
I have a motion.
Why is it still there?
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the budget. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, opposed? Alright, so now we're moving on. Alright, the next item up is the consideration of replat of 595 Melody. Okay, so on 595 Melody, this is our acre lot, this is our lot here. Alright, so, this is Stone Lane here. So, part of our thoroughfare plan is you take this road straight out, you end up right up here at the town entrance. So, this will ultimately be what I call Lakewood Village Drive. This will be from the town entrance, Alamo Road, you'll turn in Lakewood Village Drive, it'll take you right down to Stone Lane and straight into the city, into that part of town. Okay, we bought this lot seven or eight years ago because we knew we wanted to put the road through. The problem with the shores is that anyone in here can go to the mailboxes and park your car. You just show off two-thirds of the city. There is no other way out. You've blocked the entire bottom of the peninsula with one car. And that's unacceptable. You can't do that in modern subdivision design. It can't be done. It was a stupid design. But that's what they did. Well, we have to fix it. There's gotta be another way to get in. There's gotta be two ways in and out of every subdivision. So, this is the second way in. Now, this lot here, it turns out when we bought it, this lot is one point two six seven. So, it's, it's an acre and a quarter. That's how big it is. Which means, we can put the road down the side of it, and we still have an acre left, which we can sell. All the lots and the shores are deemed restricted to be an acre. So, we still have an acre left. So, that's, as Brett, as you're talking about selling a lot, that, that's the guy that we're talking about, about a hundred grand.
So, we have to put that road in before we sell the lot?
No, because the road's gonna be put in the land plan. They're gonna put that road in. But it's being replatted, all the pins are going in, so stakes are going in.
What, how realistic is it for someone to buy that before that road's in?
I, we'll find out. We're gonna put it up for sale.
Okay.
There is a, I mean, we're gonna, if anybody comes in, we're gonna make sure they know that that's, this is a matter of public record. We're not gonna be slumming you. Mark, I think you've had a conversation with the owner of this home here already. I'm sorry, I forgot his name.
Rifkin.
Because, I mean, really, both these homeowners originally bought this.
We bought, we bought, we bought this lot from Rifkin. He owned it. So, he sold it to us knowing, when we bought it, that was our intent. He told me, "You wanna buy your lot because we wanna put in a road there." That's how we want it. You have Cheryl?
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to know, when you put that road in, what is that lot's frontage in feet gonna be? I mean, is there a minimum that you have to have on road frontage? I just wanna know what that is.
There is.
Because it's getting down there where the street, is that, it fans out. But once that street goes in, how, how narrow is that gonna be?
It's like a hundred and forty feet wide. It's, it's pretty wide.
That's without the street?
Yes.
It's gonna be a hundred and forty feet without the street?
Yeah.
What is it with the street?
It's like, what is it in the back? One eighty? I can't say where they drew it.
It's one eighty-four.
That's in the back.
One eighty-four in the back, one forty at mid-lock.
One forty-one in the front.
So, this ninety-eight, that's the build line. You have, the house can't be further forward than that line towards the street.
Okay, but how, what will be the frontage on that, that lot on its own?
That's it. That's, this is the measurement across it.
I can't keep reading.
Like, like ninety-eight feet or whatever.
Ninety-eight at the build line.
Ninety-eight. Because the thing about this lot, this lot, because the road curves, this lot's a pine.
Right.
It's much bigger in the back than it is in front. The nice thing is,
I didn't want it to be too thin. You know, like in the Coltsus Act, you're gonna have that.
Right.
Normally, you've got a small entry.
It's, it's plenty big. It's one forty at mid-lock, and it's one eighty in the back. It's, it's, it's a good-sized lot.
Now, the other, you know, this is also a corner lot. So, I mean, they, they have some flexibility that maybe their house is further back here and they're actually cutting off the, the road. Depending on when they build it. If they build before the road, well, then if they want a road, they gotta go about it.
So, this, I think, is an example of, we got what we need. It's a win-win. We got what we need on this thing. There's no reason for the town to keep an acre lot. Or not. We don't, we don't need it. We don't, and we don't wanna, right now, we're mowing it.
Right.
We're mowing the whole acre and, and trimming it and doing all. So, when I, when I put the mayor's letter, I thought we were gonna have three-hundred-something thousand. That was thinking that we would sell this during the next year. And within the next year, we'll sell this. We should net over a hundred, which is more than we paid for it. Significantly more than what we paid. So, that's, that's what this is. This is the replat, so.
So, Cheryl, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
One thing I requested when we got this a few months ago was that the neighbors received a letter explaining that the road, everybody was told the road was gonna go down the middle. It was gonna be the main entrance to the area. It was gonna be trees on both sides, and the mailboxes were gonna be there. There was this story that was told several years ago. And I'm not necessarily opposed or again, you know, for or against changing this, but what I wanted was I wanted the neighbors, and you're one of them, to receive a letter to know the before and the after. Because I think your opinion's pretty valuable. So, did you receive a letter from the town?
No, I guess I got better than that. Mark stopped by my house and told me about it.
Okay, but did you receive the letter, the before?
Uh, I don't think I got a letter, but if I may say, I mean, I was.
No, we didn't send that one out.
Alright, so that's my only concern, is that this was designed a certain way to have a front entrance to an area, and it was designed with, you know, trees and this and, but also the mailboxes were supposed to be there. It was this whole different design and it would've been.
Dan, that was never kind of a story.
Well, no, I don't know about mailboxes, anything about mailboxes.
It was in the plan when we talked about this a number of years back.
Dan, you weren't even on the council, except for last year.
I know.
Yeah, I think Liz Lance would've pushed the mailboxes back with the rest, correct? I mean, the mailboxes would've.
There won't be any mailbox over there.
And they'll just be pushed back.
Yes, the mailbox.
Yeah, so, obviously, things are changing, right? So, if you ask the file of councilman and fire mayor, they'll tell you that just there's a different story. All I wanna do is just make sure the neighbors are comfortable with, you know, a road being right on top of a guy's driveway.
Well, let me tell you about that guy. I have trouble with how he maintains his yard.
I get it.
So, to me, a road is probably gonna look better than what he does to this house with the dead bushes.
Let me explain to you, council, once again. Okay, let me, let me put it to you this way, alright? We have thoroughfare plan in the past, we have to empty squat here in many years. We have thoroughfare plan. We have to have, no ifs, ands, or buts. I don't care what the person's sitting there. We have to have another way into the shores. Legally, there's got to be a second way. Now, when we opened up the barricades next to Clint's house, he didn't like it. He didn't like it a lot. He doesn't like it today. We said, "You know what? We have to do this. This is for the town. We have to put the town first. We've got to have this open." It's where the fire hydrant was.
Oh, I agree with you, Mark. I think that's where he's going for.
For us, I can send a letter to the next-door neighbor, and if he says, "I hate it," you know what?
By the law.
We're still putting the road through there. We have no other place for a road. There's no other alternatives. We have to get a second entry point in there for safety. There's got to be another way.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the other way to look at this, if you were to put the road down the middle, and the town's maintaining, owning red to red, that's more grass we gotta mow to maintain.
Oh, I agree.
Earlier, we heard the feedback, and we're trying to get the expenses down, so this is kind of a nicer way of actually trying to keep future expenses down by not incurring a lot of ride-away that has to be maintained.
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry, just wanna clarify.
Could you tell me your name, so I can?
Oh, my name's Rita Brock.
Rita Brock.
Yes.
What industry are you on?
Carrying.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I just wanna clarify. The road is not going to be put in right away, or will be put in right away?
So, no, it's not being put in right now. Where would it go?
So, we're waiting for further development from land plan?
Okay.
Until it's put in?
Yeah, where would it, it's supposed to be put in, wherever it go.
Yeah, we don't wanna put it in.
So.
Correct, so, but you, alright, that's fine. I thought it was a safety issue and it was something we were addressing, so we're not gonna address.
That's why, that's why we're trying to, we're trying to set it up for that.
Okay, so you're gonna replat it, it'll be there, but it's, there's no deadline of when we'll have a safer route out?
So, yeah, the reason for not putting any concrete on it now is that if we did it, we'd have concrete here and you still couldn't go anywhere.
Correct, okay.
We might as well wait for the land north of it to develop and do it all at one time.
I guess, just resumé it now, that's the deal.
No, no, that's, that's rough.
We'll replat it.
Re-plant, resumé.
Re-plant.
Got it.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, we don't, you know, bigger cities, what they would do is they would just go out there on their own, put the road all the way through, you know, you see that like Coint and Independence, all those ones out there in Frisco, right? They just, that's all bare nickel, and then they wait for developers to come in later. We obviously don't have the money to go putting in. That's over a million dollars to put that road in. So, land plan's gonna put it in.
They have different strategies, and they're trying to promote different roads that we're trying to just react to.
So, for us, it's just a long-range plan that, we think, I can think it can generate some money soon. Let's unload it. Let's stop mowing it, unload it, and put the money in bank. That's the game plan.
So, so this, this is a change to master plan, right? It's a shift in the road to master plan. You mean the thoroughfare plan?
The thoroughfare plan. Now, the thoroughfare plan is, is generic enough that it doesn't necessarily say that, well, you know, GPS coordinates to say this is where the road's gonna punch through.
Thoroughfare plan is,
It just says the road's gonna punch through.
To generalize documents. Yeah, but when we, when we mapped that out, we, we put it down, and again, my, my concern is that we sold it into the town is, this is the entryway to your village. Here's how it's gonna look, trees on both sides. Here's, when we get this thing, it was pretty cut out.
I think.
The only concern I have is that, all we need to do is communicate.
That's not what we did.
Are you talking about, are you talking about the land that would actually be up here on this sheet of paper?
I'm just saying that we communicated that lot in a certain way. Let's just put a letter out to people and say, "Hey, guys, we're gonna make this change." And then board it in next week. That's, that's what we asked for four months ago, is to notify the neighbors that that shift, there's gonna be an additional house there.
Dan, it doesn't matter sending out a letter. We're gonna do it anyway.
It's communicating to your people, that's all I'm suggesting.
That's fine, I'll put in the beggars' papers.
So, these, you know, the other, one, one other thing I was gonna say, the other advantage to doing it now, that whoever develops this land to the north, if this is the only remaining strip right here to connect the road, that's where they have to put the road. If they have this whole frontage across here, they can really put us in a bind. So, if we sell it and plot it and identify it the way we want it, we can really shape where we want that road.
As, as the first mover, they have to tie in our road. That's how Alamo Road, it's not a coincidence, it ties together. Right, so, as a first mover, that's exactly right. They have to come to us and tie in where we have it planted. So, I think that's, that's the game plan. So, what I'd like to do is, I would like to, with the council, approve the replat, and then we'll meet in the executive session. Part of our executive session is to discuss selling and what would be an appropriate price. So, we can get moving. I don't wanna wait till the summer to end before we try and sell the lot. It's now is the time to sell.
Just to be clear, that Bushon and the packet, that's just the, that's just the high-level replat? We have the official needs of balance.
That's the engineer, the engineer, I, what I do is I task the engineer to put a road on there with bar ditches, and see if you can make it fit, and give me an acre of leftover. So, we have bar ditches, utility easements. Let's see what we can do with it. We might have to make the utilities into a little day hour, just, because we gotta have an acre left. And, and let's get ready.
So, that checks the other box, is that in the future, there's enough room to put water line, sewer line?
Yes, it's, it's irregular parameters for our utilities, which is what we, what we want. I don't think there's gonna be utilities going down there. It's, it's a bad.
There's room if we need it.
There's room if we need it. Okay, so, I'd like to get the council's approval to complete the replat, so we can then meet and discuss selling. That's the game plan.
My motion to approve the replat of 595 Melody.
Okay, I have a motion, a second from the hearing, to replat. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Alright, next up, we have the considerations of the investment policy. Alright, so what this is, is that, back in 2008, right after we were elected, the city council made me the investment officer and gave me a full real-time bank account, which is what you would do with the accounting guy. So, that's kind of the way we have had it. One of the things you have to do is, every city has to have an investment policy, where you elaborate. The state has rules on what a city can invest in. Thank you to Orange County and the idiots there that went bankrupt. So, Texas has very stringent requirements on what cities are allowed to invest in. And then you have to have an adopted strategy, and then you pick a subset of things that you wanna invest in out of their master list. You can do them all, you can do some. So, I wrote our investment policy back in 2008, adopted the policy, which basically said what we could invest in. It was very conservative, just basically government instruments, that kind of thing. We've never had any investments in the town, we just kept our money in the bank. Fortunately for us, our timing was very good, and that when we switched banks, the banks bid for us, and we got a very high interest rate. We got an interest rate of like two percent. Then, the market cratered. Interest rates went to zero. But we have five-year contracts, so we were getting two percent. When you're, when you were getting like zero, well, then it reset. And now we're getting like a quarter of a percent. It still wasn't bad, like the last year. Well, now the rates are going up, but we're locked into our, the bank accounts now aren't attractive anymore. Because the bank accounts, if you know, they're not giving any money. The bank savings accounts don't do you any good. So, now what I wanna do is, we now wanna go into one of pools. So, Texas has pools that the Texas government runs. They have investment pools for cities that's authorized by the state of Texas. And those, right now, are paying about one point two to one point three percent. They're paying about five times what we're getting at the bank. So, now we wanna invest there. So, we, we still wanna have bank accounts to do our working capital and our day-to-day operations, but there's no reason to have our reserve funds sitting in the bank making a quarter percent when we can invest them with Tex Pool and make five times that amount. The bank's a bank. Okay, so, what this is, there's two things. One is updating our investment policy, because there's now some things, so if you could scroll. Basically, the investment policy is, you, you gotta have safety, you gotta have liquidity, and then you gotta have yield, in that order. The state says, safety, liquidity, yield. That's what you have to do. So, this is kind of the standard boilerplate that they have, that they want you to go through. I've been through training twice at the state, mandatory training. I won't talk to you about how that training went for somebody with a PhD. But, here it is, basically, the policy. If you scroll down a little bit more, you'll get to basically the, the, keep going down. Authorized, we're not gonna have any broker-dealers, keep scrolling down. Okay, acceptable investments. There's about fifty investments you can invest in, according to the state of Texas. A subset that we have here is, we're only gonna invest in obligation, we're not gonna invest in any secure group. We're not gonna buy treasury bonds. We're not gonna buy a CMO. We're not gonna do a repo agreement, reverse repo. We're not gonna do any transactions on our own. Period. That's not allowed. Only thing we can do is invest in a mutual fund or a pool. Pool run by the state of Texas. That's it. No individual investments are allowed. So, what this was before was, we could invest in obligation of the US government, obligation of the state of Texas. I changed that to say mutual funds, which hold obligations of the government. So, we're not going to buy our own treasury bonds. We're not gonna do any of that stuff. We're only gonna hold money in pools. So, this is the kind of the updated investment policy. It's much stricter than anybody else. There's no reason for us to invest in any kind of securities. The only thing we wanna invest in is a money-market mutual fund that holds treasury securities or holds short maturity. Commercial paper, AAA-rated, that kind of stuff. So, that's our investment policy. Incredibly safe. So, that's what we're gonna do here. And then, this is just, again, more, more the boilerplate that goes along with it. For us, we've never had investments before. We've only had bank accounts. So, it's, it's time for us to move money into Tex Pool.
So, if we need it, it's just as lookable, as, as a savings account?
It's exactly the same. It works, it, it's, it's exactly the same as Point Bank, where we have our money now. We go online, we do, and Linda can do an electronic transfer. Linda, you actually write checks on it.
Right.
You can actually do bill pay, even though it's a Tex Pool. We're not going to.
So, there's no risk in it?
No. There's, there's always risk to, you know, turn the country far away, launch a, move their weapons. But no, there's no, it's diversified risk. So, they hold government securities and A1, P1, commercial paper.
What, what percentage are we taking a put in of that, of our reserve and all that stuff?
All of our reserves.
So, that's the problem.
All of our reserves are gonna go.
If you read this, there's nothing in there that allows the council to determine how much gets in there. So, if your reserve is a hundred and fifty thousand, if your reserve's four hundred and fifty thousand, if your reserve's a million bucks, there's one person who gets to make that decision. And I think that's, not against having investment policy, because it's a good improvement, and I'm all for it, but the amount that gets invested each year should fall to your master plan. You say, "Hey, we've got X number of dollars in the bank, we put this thing," and the chief investment officer should present that to the council, and the council should go down it. So, that brings real clear of how much money you're putting in risk. That's the only thing I see missing from here is the oversight on the C.
I guess I don't understand that.
He's just saying, should we have a check and balances? So, the, the council does a check and balance on what you're, where you're moving it? Which I wanna see that that would be a, a big.
No, he's just, what this requires is every quarter, I have, because it's investment, we've never had investments before. They've always been a bank account. So, now, every quarter, I would say, you know, we've got, because the way it sets up at Tex Pool is just like we have at Point Bank. There's a general fund reserve, there's a utility fund reserve, there is a road fund, road main. We set up exactly the same accounts like we have here. So, you say, okay, because what happens each month is, I put money in reserve each month. At the utility fund, at the end of the month, I take the credit cards, we move money into the reserve. We try and boost the reserve each month. Some months, we take money out, because we need to, we need to pay some bills. So, the money goes in, the money goes out. That, that's the way that it works. That's the way the reserves go. Okay? It's very fluid. Because the way a city works, just real quick here, a city gets all of its money, most of its money, in December and January. You get the tax money that comes in. Then you spend the whole year spending it down. You get some money coming in, but essentially, you're front-loaded with your money. So, the whole year, what you're doing is periodically taking money out of your reserve and moving it over into the city and paying bills. So, you, you take it down. Then you get to the year, and then you get new tax money. That's, that's how, that's how the city fund works. Utility fund, what happens is, we get money every month. So, the money comes in each month, and some months, like now, we're making some serious revenue right now because of heat. Now, we're, we're building that reserve fund. I probably put nine thousand dollars in the reserve fund last month. We'll probably put ten thousand in this one. Utility fund climbs. Then when we do a capital expenditure for us, that typically happens in the winter. Why do we do our capital expenditures in the winter for the utility system? In case we break it, it's at the lowest demand. So, the tanks are full. You don't do that in the summer when the tanks are churning and we're using a lot of water. We don't wanna do any repairs or anything when we're at max usage. We do it at the low season. So, that's how, that's how the, the accounts ebb and flow. Okay, so, it's not like there's a plan. My plan is to put as much as I can in the reserve. That's the plan. That's what we do.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
Okay, um, page three. Number five, it says delegation of authority. So, this means that we're giving you full authority to determine how much is being invested in these pools.
I already have that authority.
You already have that authority?
It already has it.
I already have it.
He doesn't have the authority to put Point Bank, to, to Point, it's to put it in the bank if the authority asks.
Okay, so, so right now, the, the investment officer of the town is me. There's a separate ordinance. Each, each city has to name, somebody has to be in charge of the city's finances. You have to name someone.
Right.
By ordinance. That's me. There's a separate ordinance out there, it's a separate resolution, it's, I think it's oh eight oh one? Oh eight oh three, there's a resolution?
I have a question there, there, officer.
Right.
What I'm asking is, does section number five give you full authority to decide how much is invested without bringing it to the council?
Yeah, I can move money into that fund or out of that fund. That's right.
Okay, then, I have a problem with that section. I think that we do need to know how much is being invested.
Well, I think it's more than you know, I think there's an approval.
Because I'm delegating that authority, that's what this says, I'm giving it to you.
Okay, so, I, I understand what you're saying. So, the way it works right now in the city is that we meet once a month. So, if there's a repair, the main breaks tomorrow, and we gotta go out there and repair the main, and it's twelve thousand dollars, I'm gonna have to move money from the bank account to reserve fund to the general fund to write that check. Okay, I can't wait a month. I, that, that, there's no question that we're gonna do, we have to fix it.
But, yeah, that's, that's a very, we have to figure out with the checks and balances, right? Because it's insane, you meet once a month, but you don't know when that major expense could come in.
Okay.
So, the way this reporting works.
So, why don't we just invest fifty percent and leave the other fifty percent in another account where you can pay whatever you need to pay that comes up in an emergency basis?
Wouldn't that be the same thing?
That's the same thing.
You just have two accounts instead of one?
Well, you take the risk out.
The authority is still vested with the same person, regardless if it's an A and B or A or B.
Well, A would have risk, B would not have risk.
Let me, let me explain. Okay, so, the, the, the pool that we're moving into is the pool that has six hundred and fifty, it was set up by the state of Texas. Let me, let me explain, okay, so, the, the, the pool that we're moving into is the pool that has six hundred and fifty, it was set up by the state of Texas, there's six hundred and fifty cities that are in this pool, there's like four hundred and fifty school districts, it's only for governments, it's run, in order to be in the pool, the forms that, that we're gonna fill out here, go to the comptroller. The Texas comptroller is the one that determines whether or not we're allowed in this pool, it's, it's run, yeah, it's run by cities for cities, so, there's, as far as the, the risk, the risk we have is that the world's gonna end. It's not a for-profit company, or, it's investing only in government securities, it's investing in, in AAA rated, it's...
So, you know, me, me, I mean...
It's not a risky thing, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Is it a question with the risk of the pool, or the question with the, the authority that lies within one person?
That's it, the authority.
The same.
The authority, I feel that the authority should not lie in only one person, I think that we should be involved when it comes to investing, because this is an investment.
Well, so is a bank, so is a savings account.
No, but there's, when you're doing investments, it's because you're, you're wanting that money to grow, so there could be a fluctuation of, you know, making money or losing money. This is, I'm looking at this like a 401K.
That's wrong.
Or a...
Yes, there's not.
No, 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 okay, back up.
Or a, um...
What you're saying is fine, okay, that makes perfect sense, but, the instrument that we're investing in is, is a money market mutual fund, okay? It, it holds very short-term government securities, the price of it is one dollar, the price doesn't change, it's one dollar, it's a money market mutual fund, it's one dollar, constant dollar.
So when we, so when we, if we go this direction, then we're not investing city funds in multiple different types of accounts?
Text pool only has two accounts.
Okay.
One is strictly US government securities, US government securities, okay? The other one is US government securities, plus some commercial paper, which is A1, P1, which is basically short-term commercial paper.
Okay, so there will have to be a decision made, uh, as far as which one of the...
Which pool do you wanna put it in?
Which pool, what, we, okay, which one pool?
There's, you know, you can put both, there's two pools.
Okay, so you can split it?
You could, yeah, you, you could decide, let's split half and half, in each one.
Okay, and what is, what would be the decision basis for which pool you might invest city funds into?
Okay, that's a fair question, so, government secure, so the way these pools are set up, the maturity on these things is basically, be like, if you have a treasury bond that is going to mature, you're gonna get your principal back in sixty days, you're gonna get all, you're gonna get your principal back, so you get sixty days worth of interest. That, that's, that's what one of the funds is, it's short-term, very short-term, that's why the price doesn't change, the price stays at a dollar, it doesn't change, because there, there's not enough, there's no market price, it doesn't change. Like, if I gave you a savings bond that's gonna, gonna mature next week, you're gonna get your money next week, it doesn't, there's no pricing on that, it's, it's worth exactly what it's worth, okay? The other fund is, is a safety and mutual fund, but what it invests in, for, it gets a higher rate of return, instead of, let's say, one point one, it gets one point three percent. What that invests in is what's called commercial paper, so it has treasury, and it has commercial paper, so, let's say Brent's company says, you know what, we've got a big contract coming in, but it's coming in in two weeks, I gotta make my payment. Brent could issue what's called commercial paper, it's an IOU, it says, we need to borrow money for just two weeks, and then, then we'll give you, you know, repay the loan. And they're rating, there's different categories, the only thing they can do is A1, P1, the top of the top, the, the General Electrics, the, the Apples, the top of the top of the top. That's called commercial paper.
Okay, so is it, is it likely that, uh, that city funds would be invested in just one, or a combination of those two?
Usually you put in two, because there, there's minimal risk in them, it just, it's how you wanna do it, I mean, the difference between one point one percent and one point three percent is not a deal changer. It's just, it's criminal to sit at point two, when you can get five times as much for literally doing this, that's it.
So, let me ask you, so, if the risk were to go in the bad way, so like four by four one K, right, if it can go the wrong way and actually lose money, in this pool, what's the worst case, it goes to zero, or can it actually have a negative, and now we're paying fees?
I, for, for it to lose money, the federal government would have to default, the world would have to...
So it's federally insured, is what you're saying?
It's what?
Federally insured.
No, it's not federally insured.
So there's no guarantee, though?
No, there's no, there's no guarantee, but, let me, let me explain something, if you, if you have a, a US treasury bond, that's, that's got a thousand dollar face on it, it doesn't matter what the price is, if you keep it until, until it matures, then they, you're gonna get your thousand dollars when you hand them the bond.
And I thought several years ago, US bonds lost, or not, recovered what you had invested?
For you, for, for treasury bonds, correct, you can lose money on bonds, but you lose money bec...